This conference will now be recorded.
Almost there.
Casey's almost there.
All right, that's fine. You tell me when you're ready. How are we doing, Casey?
Almost there. We're live.
Okay, great, thank you. I want to call the Monday, May 18th, 2020 Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First, we'll establish a quorum. Commissioner Hall, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Great, and how about Commissioner Hunt?
I am present.
Great, okay, all three of us are here, so we have a quorum present. I'm also going to go through and kind of do a roll call of everyone else on the phone and give us an opportunity to kind of do a sound check so we have time to work through any technical issues now. So Kristy, Peter.
I'm here.
Yay, Wayne Belmont.
Present.
Hey, Rebecca Austin.
I'm here.
Wiley Thompson.
Wiley's here.
Okay, Eric Flanders.
Present.
Hey, Jerry Urbich.
Present.
Hey, Roy Kenyon.
Yep, I'm here.
Great, thank you, Nicole Fields.
I'm here.
And then it looks like we have someone on the phone, whoever that is.
I'm on the phone, Janet Harrison.
Oh, hi Janet, okay, great. All right, so now that I made all of you talk, if you can please mute your microphones if you're not talking, that would be appreciated, thank you. First up is a proclamation proclaiming May as Older Americans Month in Lincoln County. Commissioner Hall or Commissioner Hunt, do one of you want to read the proclamation?
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to. And if, since we don't have a presenter after I read the proclamation, if I could just make a few comments, and I'm sure you both might want to chime in. This is in the matter of proclaiming May 2020, or 2020, as Older Americans Month in Lincoln County, whereas Lincoln County includes a growing number of older Americans who enrich our community through their diverse life experiences. Whereas Lincoln County is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families and caregivers, and acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society. And whereas Lincoln County recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all. And whereas Lincoln County can enhance the lives of older Americans in our community by providing home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work, volunteer, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore, we, the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2020 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of the community. And this is a proclamation we do every May at the request of Cascades West Council of Governments. One of the really important pieces of legislation in American history, I think, came in 1965 when Congress passed the Older Americans Act, along with a lot of other great society legislation. Medicare was established at the time, and also the Older Americans Act realized that people were living longer, but the longer we live, oftentimes people are going to need more assistance to maintain their health and independence to the greatest degree possible for as long as possible. And senior services are delivered through regional entities called AAA's, Area Agencies on Aging. And Lincoln County is part of a Lynn Benton Lincoln region. Cascades West COG delivers services out of their office in Toledo. And, you know, I think as we continue focusing on the COVID-19 virus, it's good to remember that a very large proportion of our population is seniors. Folks who are not only vulnerable physically, but vulnerable, I think, in terms of the effects of isolation. And I know COG staff, case managers are still very much on the job with their clients. You know, if this was a typical meeting, which it's not, we'd have actual staff from COG Toledo here to talk with us about some of the current programs, but in in the absence of that, we do have this proclamation and this salute to all our senior family, friends, and neighbors, as well as the staff who serves them. I'll stop talking now.
And I'm on. Thank you, Commissioner Hall. Any comments from you, Commissioner Hunt?
I'd just like to note, as the proclamation states, seniors make many contributions to our society. And I would note that that is certainly over generations, not, not just to their own generation as they progress. But I think it's important to note that their contributions take many forms. Certainly, when they're in their active careers, they're contributing in many ways. But they continue to contribute after careers and providing volunteerism, providing support for many nonprofits and other activities for our county and the nation. And certainly, the sharing of knowledge is a critical part of what the older Americans do as part of the many contributions that are made to our societies. So certainly an appropriate proclamation and maybe in the current times, an especially appropriate proclamation.
Thank you. I would, I would just add that what always strikes me about about our older population, specifically in Lincoln County, it's actually a research project I was involved in many years ago, looking at you know, just, just how much time that we have older Lincoln County residents providing for volunteerism. We have an enormous amount of efforts that goes into helping our nonprofits and getting things done to help vulnerable populations and other nonprofit organizations that simply just could not be done without our retirement population here basically serving those hours. And we're talking thousands, hundreds of thousands of hours a year that they put in from all different types of services and organizations across the county. So really, really critical piece of our infrastructure, frankly. Because all these volunteers we have, and a lot of them are in that older American category. So just a big thank you to everybody who does that. With that, I will go ahead and make a motion proclaiming May 2020 as Older Americans Month in Lincoln County.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Right, thank you. Next up is the adoption of the consent counter, and these are items of routine nature. Either commissioners or staff can pull an item off the consent counter for further discussion if needed. Otherwise, they'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
And I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 No names? All right, thank you. Onto reports. First up, Lincoln County Public Health COVID-19 update, presented by Nicole Fields, and I think Rebecca Austin is on the call as well.
Good afternoon, this is Nicole. I'll give you a quick update on numbers and then talk a little bit about what we're doing more specifically in Lincoln County. So in the state of Oregon, there are 3,687 total cases of COVID-19. That includes eight cases in Lincoln County, five of which are recovered. And there have been 1,124 negative tests in the county. You're seeing that testing number continue to go up on a pretty regular basis every week. Samaritan has expanded out their testing capacity a little bit. So basically, anyone is getting referred with a provider if they have any symptoms of COVID-19. They're trying to really widen out that screening. They're also doing testing for anyone who's coming in for routine procedures right now. So we're getting a lot more negative tests, and testing has expanded out. There's a drive-through testing site in both Depot Bay and Wildport now. So we're serving multiple ends of our county and look for that to continue to expand out. We worked on a project with our folks on the trawling fleet, and we completed a successful testing setup of testing that entire fleet. That's actually gained some interest statewide right now, where we have folks from the CDC that are in a strike team here in Oregon right now that are trying to gain some lessons learned from the work that we did with our trawling fleet. So that was really a cool project for us here. Working with our other vulnerable populations, we are doing a lot of strategizing around our long-term care facilities and seeing how we can best help them to prevent outbreaks. Right now, we're even trying to support things like an MOU with different community partners to help with surge staffing and looking at possibly testing some staff in the future at those long-term care facilities. Doing a lot of outreach work with our Latinx population in the county, and then trying to reach our mom population. Doing some work through some non-traditional channels, which includes a lot of word-of-mouth and actual individual outreach, and that population speaks a language that is not a written language. It's actually only a spoken language, so we're having to think outside the box. And then if I could, just walk you one more time through contact tracing and isolation, because I feel like we're getting a lot of questions in the media, and I'm seeing a lot of questions on our county Facebook group pages about contact tracing and isolation. So what that is, is if we get a confirmed case of COVID-19, we are talking to that person within a few hours to see where they've been and who they've had contact with. And then when we say the word isolation, we're just making sure that people who have been in contact with someone with COVID-19 or someone that has COVID-19 has a safe place to stay where they're isolated from any friends, family, they're not going out into the community until their symptoms clear up. So we're seeing some people thinking that we're kind of taking people and isolating them forcefully, and that's simply not the case. Most of the time, isolation is just someone staying home until their symptoms clear up. And that is my update. I can answer any questions, or if Rebecca would like to add on anything to my update, you are welcome to. Thanks.
Well, thanks Nicole.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
So I just thought I would give a little bit broader context to all that Nicole has just talked about. Because we, you are going to be seeing in the next, probably months, maybe less, a contract amendment coming from OHA for our program element number one, which is the state support for public health, which really governs our communicable disease program. And all the criteria that we needed to attest to for reopening application are now written into the requirements of this program element. So, and there's a couple different parts to it. There's, just like the reopening application, there's the local part, which is really the testing capacity, the contact training, and the isolation housing alternatives, plus essential services to support those in isolation. And partnering with our tribe and preventing infections in our vulnerable populations, which Nicole did a very nice job talking about some of the challenges we're having with that, but we are working on it, so that's good. And then the other part is to work with our regional partners, and again, this is our new regional partners, new to us anyhow. That includes Marion Polk and Yamhill, besides Lynn and Benton, who we're used to working with. So in this portion of the program element, we'll be really focused on getting some more epidemiology support into our region. So we have yet to determine who will be the fiscal agent for that work. But probably Marion or Benton, I would think, because I think they both have epidemiologists already. So we'll be contracting with them to give us some of those services so we can really understand what's going on in our county. And the more we test, which is also something Nicole brought up, the more we test, the more we're going to know where the disease is sort of lurking in our community. So those are just sort of the big, big items, and of course, there's act, this is a new phenomenon for public health. There's actually money that's coming along with these new requirements. So we're kind of excited about that for sure.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions from Commissioner Hall?
Yes, Madam Chair, a question related to testing that someone asked me, so maybe Nicole or Rebecca could answer this. Okay, say that somebody tests positive, and we're doing the contact tracing. Do all, are all of their contacts just notified and encouraged to shelter in place and watch for symptoms? Are they actually, do they actually have, or do they actually have the opportunity to be tested if, if they have confirmed contact with a confirmed case?
So this is Nicole. I think if they have had close contact with a confirmed case, then it would be in their best interest to contact their provider, and their provider can make that recommendation. Typically, we are seeing people getting tested if they've had close contact with a confirmed case of COVID-19. I think that that changed from the very beginning. In the very beginning, it was all about sheltering in place, and so this may be new for some people. It's going to depend a little bit on the provider, but I think in general, those folks are getting tested now. You did bring up a really good point. I've actually seen a scam going around online that a lot of police departments are warning their constituents about, which involves getting a text message saying that you've been a case contact for someone with confirmed COVID-19, and to click the link, public health will not contact you via text. That is not how we're going to make contact to let you know that you have been a case contact. So do not click that link, it is not.
Okay, thanks for the information.
Commissioner Hunt, comments or questions from you?
I really have a two-part question. So, we'll use the example of Saturday, we had our eighth case, and I know that public health was out doing the contact tracing Saturday. Through the contact tracing process, will we be able to potentially identify how an individual contacted the COVID virus, or will we simply be alerting the people that that individual came in touch with that they had contact with the virus? In other words, can we go backwards rather than forwards?
Um, I think it depends. You know, some, some of the time, these case contact investigations are really easy for us, because you know, if it's someone in the same household with someone that has already tested positive for COVID-19, we usually have a fairly good idea of where they've gotten it from. However, if it's someone that is getting it when they're out in the community, we have less of an idea of where they're getting it from, so it's harder to pinpoint. I don't think we'll ever get to the point where we're saying, oh, they got it from this specific person, or they got it at this specific location. So I think it's just too, it varies too much to say with any certainty, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
Yeah, that was my question. So the next part would be with the, the county on Friday, I understand that the, I guess, incubation period of the virus can be from a handful of days, four or five days, to potentially 14 days or more. When might we be able to have some kind of a feel or an indication whether or not the virus is spreading more rapidly since we've reopened the county?
I would say any time between now and the next, you know, 10 to 14 days, we'll have a pretty good idea. If people start becoming symptomatic, occasionally we can link that to an outbreak in a certain place, like if it's a facility, like a long-term care facility or a work plant. It would be difficult to say, you know, oh gosh, we had a cluster at Safeway or something like that, because where, that's a place where a lot of people go, so it's hard to, hard to pin down, but I would say we would know if we're going to get any type of outbreak from the reopening in the next, you know, two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, and just a, just a couple comments from mine. One, I think a lot of people are concerned, obviously, that with the county opening back up, we would have increases in cases, but I just also want to point out that we're also continuing to have increased testing. So with increased testing on its own, even if the county was still closed, we likely would have increased cases. In the beginning, for quite a while, you know, we were, we were hovering around 20 people tested in the county, or 30 people tested, and now we have hundreds of people tested, and over 100 people tested each week. So I think there's kind of two things why we might see positives. One is increased testing, and the other one is opening of the county. The second thing I just wanted to ask, and again, someone had asked me this, and so I just wanted to kind of ask it to some others listening to get the answer, is OHA is now, you know, recording recovered cases by the county, by counties. But what does it mean to be recovered? Is the person tested to see that they're negative? Or is it simply that they've been at home for a while, they're no longer in the hospital, they no longer have symptoms, and they're, so they're deemed recovered, or is it, are they actually tested until they test negative?
So the vast majority of the recovered cases are folks that have tested positive, and then we continue to monitor them. And then they are considered recovered when they have had no symptoms at all for at least three days, so at least 72 hours. I know that sometimes if it is a person that is working in a healthcare setting, a long-term care facility setting, we've seen in other counties that they have been asked to get retested until they test negative. But I think for the most part, that's just communication that's happening between our communicable disease nurses and the folks that have tested positive for when we are sure that they are no longer having symptoms.
Okay, great, thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jacobson, I have a follow-up question.
Yes.
Thank you, Nicole. So an individual is a confirmed case, is confirmed, recovered. Could they get the virus a second time?
You know, I'm not sure that there's enough data on that yet. I don't know that they have a definitive answer. I've seen kind of both, both answers floating around, and not sure if Rebecca's heard anything different than I have, but I've heard people kind of leaning towards it building in immunity, but it's so new that I just don't think they have the research available to say definitively whether or not it does build an immunity for you.
Okay, that's what I guessed was the case, but it'd be interesting to learn if there's a clear determination of that situation. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess the last question I have was again, something that, you know, I've heard people are talking about it on social media, but I guess they would just like to talk about it with public health, which is this potential new symptom of the disease called COVID toes. You know, and if that actually seems to be a thing, there seems to be some research indicating that it is. I know in the past when we have communicated with the public about possible symptoms, I don't think COVID toes was on our list. But I'm just curious where kind of public health is at in acknowledging that as a potential symptom, or where OHA is at in acknowledging that as a potential symptom.
That's an interesting question, because I just very recently heard about COVID toes myself. OHA does not currently list it as one of the symptoms that they are collecting data on, but I think that that will change as it gets more and more prevalent. Like at first, we only saw, you know, four symptoms that they were, they were including on on that weekly report of symptoms, and now it's up to, gosh, I think, like probably 15. It's everything from, you know, abdominal pain to vomiting to chills, shortness of breath, along with some of the bigger ones like cough, fever. So I wouldn't be surprised to get it, to see it get added to that, that list in the next few weeks, but I don't think they're quite there yet.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we got.
Sorry, Commissioner Jacobson, I didn't mean to interrupt. I thought you were through with your questioning, so I apologize.
I'm through, go ahead.
I'm done now.
Sorry.
I interrupted earlier, I apologize.
No, your question made me think of another question, so it's fine.
Okay.
All right, um, thank you, both Rebecca and Nicole for the update. Appreciate all the work you're doing. Moving into incident management team update. Rachel Maddox Hughes is actually not on our call today. She needed the time to work on writing our business organ grant, so she is doing that right now. But I do believe we have Wiley Thompson on the phone to provide an update, and then I said that Chris Chandler jumped in as well. So Wiley, would you like to start, and then Chris can give some updates as well?
Sure, thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. I've been really happy to work with Sam. She's been very helpful in getting our social media ready so that we can do some open source innovation to get project area ideas. We're starting to get some success in building the teams from the recovery function team perspective, and getting that kind of whole society approach so that we have the right people to ensure that as we go forward, anything we do has a good equity, sustainability, and resilience focus, and that everybody's being considered in the process. We're, we've necked down our program pillars into economic vitality, healthy communities, and livable communities. And that's how the social media request will go out. We've had some good discussions in broadband. But we want to make sure that that request, or that that discussion is, is viewed as in access to digital information, because we know broadband is not going to service everyone. There's going to be a combination of strategies, and that's going very, very well. And so, subject to the commissioner's questions or anybody else, that's pretty much what I have to share.
Great. Commissioner Hall, questions?
None at this time.
Yeah, Commissioner Hunt?
I would just say I'm encouraged by the work that's being done, and keep it up. Thank you.
And I would like to note that I, I remember Commissioner Hall, you did talk about getting a briefing or a presentation, and, you know, whenever, you know, whoever wants to be a part of that, I can do that at any time to to give you some better detail on where we're going with this. So whatever, whatever's convenient.
Yep. And I would say I don't have any questions at this time. Wiley and I have been in, in pretty close, um, contact with each other, um, throughout this. I feel like I don't, um, have any questions, but I do look forward to kind of a public engagement, social media push that's about ready, um, to go out. So I think that will be good in providing some, um, some feedback from the public on some of those, uh, plans and teams. So thank you. Um, Chris, anything you wanted to add in, in terms of your end of recovery work and marketing?
Uh, emailed with Wiley this morning. Um, I have interviewed all the folks that, um, he initially wanted me to talk to and should have, um, some ideas and thoughts, uh, either by the end of this week or next week.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Chris.
If I may ask Chair Jacobson, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, no, it's okay. Go ahead.
You know, this virtual meeting stuff, I can't tell if you're moving on or not, but, uh, while we have, uh, Chris Chandler, uh, Chris, would you give us an update about the, um, face shields and, um, sales, uh, through the chambers that are being funded by the county?
Yes. Uh, the order was placed and the first, uh, group of shields were picked up and distributed to four of the interested chambers. It didn't get a lot of interest from others. Um, that would be Depot Bay, Waldport, Newport and Lincoln City. They had been contacting the first group that we wanted to have priority, given priority for them, and that would be senior care facilities, medical clinics, including veterinarians, uh, dentists, that sort of, uh, thing, all first responders as well. Then opening it up to, uh, businesses at large. And in another week or so, if they're not all spoken for, then to the public where they could make arrangements with the chambers to purchase them and pick them up, perhaps at the chamber offices, depending on the chamber. I think it's a really great.
It's not a.
Sorry?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, I, I think, uh, you're placing a second order, um, as, uh, right now, or we're in a second order phase.
Oops, did we lose her? Oh, Chris, you're on mute if you're trying to talk.
All right. Okay. Um, yeah, we placed that, um, overall order for a thousand, but the, the manufacturer didn't have a thousand in stock. He had to make, um, he is making more every day or his, uh, uh, 3D printers are making them every day. And of course they have to be, uh, configured and all that. But, um, we have basically first call on its production up to a thousand shields. And I'm very hopeful they'll all be spoken for within Lincoln County.
And again, then the county is purchasing the shields and then, uh, in effect, giving them to the chambers to sell and the chambers are then able to keep the process for themselves.
Yes, and they are selling them at the county's cost. So there is no, um, you know, gouging or anything like that. Um, the gentleman who's making them says he is making a bit of profit at the $10 per price, uh, which I think is great. I think they're pretty affordable and, um, I'm hopeful they'll catch on more and more given as much as we find out about this virus and, uh, I think the need for eye protection, the cases being made for that. So I'm hoping folks will jump, jump on board. I really like the nature of this public-private partnership. Um, there's lots of folks involved with this. Um, the initial design was worked on with, uh, Samaritan Health, particularly North Lincoln Hospital. And, uh, they're being produced actually at the Oregon Coast Community College campus in Lincoln City. So Oregon Coast is, is helping out and the school district also is involved. So with the county's, uh, funds plus the chambers, uh, staffing, I think it's just a win-win.
Yeah, and I would just add that what I've.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
I would just add that what I've heard, um, personally from people that have worn these is that, um, you know, obviously a face shield has to, you know, be functional and provide the safety needs provided to person from us. They're actually quite comfortable to actually wear, um, all day. So that's sort of an, an added bonus for, um, our first responders and others that need to be wearing these things is that it's actually something that, um, you know, they can wear all day with comfort. So, um, functional design, but a comfortable design as well.
Yes, and, and I would add that, um, given my research, this is a supplement to wearing a mask, not instead of. And unfortunately, on a conference call that the chambers were participating in today, um, there is some doubt being cast on whether they can be used for restaurant workers. I find that very surprising and disappointing as well. So if county health, uh, folk have any, uh, light to share on why that might be, I know that, you know, this, uh, pandemic and the virus causing it is a bit of a moving target and things change frequently. Um, but I fail to see why wearing a face shield wouldn't be useful, uh, for example, for kitchen workers and also for folks that are working as host folk at the front desk, you know, uh, seating people, taking funds, that kind of thing. It makes sense that wearing a shield would be a, a good hands-free way to go. But, um, again, things change and maybe folks will see it differently. But if anyone has light to share on why these shields might not work for restaurant personnel when they are working for medical personnel, I, I would love to have that information.
Rebecca or Nicole, do you guys want to, um, answer now or if you need time to kind of do research on that and get back to Chris, that is all right as well?
Yeah, we could check with Amy. I'm thinking maybe the heat is a, a particular concern, but I'm happy to check with Amy and see what she says and can get back to you.
Yeah, these were made to be completely reusable over and over and over again and able to be, uh, sterilized or have antibacterials used on them, uh, frequently. So, you know, I, I can imagine there might be some concerns about grease and that sort of thing, but, um, you know, we have to protect our workers and I think it's important to, you know, it's in everyone's interest to prevent infection. Um, so, you know, I know folks sometimes have to work in close quarters with each other. It's hard to keep physical distancing. So, um, I'm hoping that maybe some will, because it isn't a mandate, maybe some will try them and then we can have that as a tester. Although every kitchen's different, I get that too.
No, it sounds like, um, Rebecca is going to circle back with Amy Chapman, who does her restaurant inspections and really works with those establishments and have a chat with her and kind of pull you in, Chris.
Thank you. That would be great.
Okay. Um, all right. Uh, questions from Commissioner Hall for Chris? I'm sorry, I don't remember if I already asked it or not.
I don't think you did. And no, I don't have questions for Chris right now.
Hey, Commissioner Hunt, anything from you?
No, I'm done for the moment. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Thank you, Chris. Um, reports from commissioners, um, I, I will pass. Commissioner Hall, anything?
I will pass.
Commissioner Hunt?
I'll just briefly indicate that, uh, the, um, Northwest Works, uh, the Northwest Workforce Board is, uh, in the process of, uh, arranging, uh, interviews of a couple of candidates to be the coordinator for the maritime activities, um, in, uh, as part of the maritime workforce that I, uh, chaired. And we're interviewing a couple of candidates. The individual would, uh, be housed at the office of the Northwest Works in Lincoln City and would be responsible for developing, uh, educational programs with the, uh, community colleges along the coast, as well as job training programs with the two, um, workforce boards along the coast. So, uh, we continue to move forward and actually identifying somebody that positions primarily funded with money from the Oregon Coast Zone Management System, I think, OCCZMA and, um, our county and also the Port of Gerbil provided a little bit of money for our startup. So, um, good news there for potential jobs, uh, in the maritime sector.
Yeah, I, I'm actually on the board of the Oregon Coastal Zone Management Association and voted to approve those funds, so, um.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Moving on, under decision and action items, um, extending our declaration of emergency related to COVID-19 through June 25th, 2020. Um, Council Belmont, anything you wanted to add or present to the board before we take this, potential action?
Thank you, Chair Jacobson. Just to note that, um, of course, last week, the board adopted Order Number 52136, which started the process of reopening lodging properties, which we'll talk about, um, a little bit later in discussion and information. Uh, but what we want to do is make sure that the, um, the declaration of emergency coincides with the timeframes in which we'll be doing any kind of, uh, emergency, um, actions or restrictions. So we're recommending actually the date of June 25th. It's a little bit short of the date that the governor has, um, placed, um, declaration of emergency for the state, which is out to July 6th. But this coincides with what we think, uh, will be the expiration of Phase 1 in Lincoln County and movement into Phase 2. All other things being equal and no slippage or, or return to, um, uh, cases within the county, we would move into Phase 2 potentially by June 25th. And of course, I, I think we'll come back and revisit this as things go along.
Yeah, I, I have a question. If I do the math, um, correctly, assuming there's no, um, large surge in cases or anything like that, um, we potentially would move into a Phase 2 scenario pending that guidance becoming finalized by the governor's office, which has not happened yet. But, um, with what we know at this point in time, which changes frequently, what we know right now, is we potentially would move into Phase 2, um, by maybe the first or second week of June. Um, but yet this extends out to June 25th. And so I guess I just wanted to get some clarity on that.
Yeah. Well, the guidance is we're in Phase 1 because we actually entered Phase 1 on the 15th. We're in Phase 1 through about June 4th. And then again, as the current guidance, which seems to be changing all the time, and I know they have not finalized the guidance for Phase 2, it would be another 21 days in Phase 2, as I understand it, potentially to, to move out to, um, the end of Phase 2 to move into Phase 3.
Okay.
But that was the reason why we suggest, uh, are suggesting June 25th.
Got it. And we can always.
We can always change it. This is all, all, uh, been subject to change throughout, so we'll continue to monitor it.
Great. Okay. Questions from Commissioner, um, Hall?
Madam Chair, yeah, thank you. Mr. Belmont, I'm not sure if this is the place to ask it or somewhere else, but, uh, do you talk about the ruling out of Baker County this morning that I understand essentially invalidates everything the governor has done up to now through her executive orders? And that I know there was a statement that the state, the governor and her team would be pursuing an expedited appeal to the state Supreme Court, but, uh, you know, what is the status? What, 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 what is the practical effect of this right now? I mean, are all of her, um, distancing and, uh, gathering size, uh, guideline, you know, directives just thrown out and it becomes up to everyone's conscience or, and how does this, if at all, impact us, uh, in terms of local actions?
Well, I can tell you this, that was a decision made in, in one circuit court in the 36 counties. There's many different circuit courts around the state. In terms of the decision, there, we're still waiting for some updates on it. We don't know the total impact of that. Uh, there is a process, as I understand it, for an expedited appeal of that decision directly to the Supreme Court. Um, but we're really not sure where things are. So, um, I'm going to withhold giving you any specific advice on that till I get more information.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Hunt, questions?
No, again, I would just emphasize that this is extending the declaration of emergency. It's really, um, just, uh, enabling, uh, our board to take, uh, other actions under the state of an emergency.
Yeah, and I, I would also add that, um, I know when Governor Brown extended her state of emergency, that people got very confused that extending the emergency was extending the stay-home order. Um, and I would just add that those are two different, um, things. Um, they are connected, but they're two different orders and, um, many times you have state of emergencies that don't actually, um, result in a stay-home order. Um, you might have a flood or, or something like that where you, um, declare an emergency over a certain period of time, but, um, you know, there's not a stay-home order. So, so two different things. Um, this is not extending, um, closures or anything. That's kind of a different process, but this just allows us to, um, govern and see of uncertainty that we're, um, currently in. Um, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move for approval of the resolution extending declaration of emergency related to COVID-19 through June 25th, 2020.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Not opposed. Thank you. All right. Moving on to another order, this is, um, the transfer of jurisdiction of a portion of Logan Road, County Road Number 100 to the City of Lincoln City. I originally promised a large party when we were going to do this. Unfortunately, because of social distancing, we can't have our large parties, so we'll have to, um, have to do that some other time. Um, but I will turn it over to Council Belmont and Roy Kenyon for information.
Commissioners, this is Wayne Belmont, County Council, and I'm very pleased to, uh, present this order to you for action today. This is the culmination of a very long process, a great deal of discussion and negotiation with the, uh, City of Lincoln City to complete the transfer of Logan Road to the city. As you may recall, we began the process, um, some time ago, um, with the idea that rather than, uh, making any improvements, uh, to the road because there's some issues, um, especially on the north end of the road, we would transfer the road into the condition it is currently, but provide some money to the City of Lincoln City to undertake the repairs or not, whatever they decide to do, um, at some time in the future, but it would be their responsibility to do so. So, um, you approved an order which made an offer to the city, um, to, uh, take the road, the transfer, uh, and jurisdiction of the road under the conditions that were described in the order, including the payment of some money. And I'll let Mr. Kenyon talk about that. But, um, the city did finally act on that. They passed an ordinance which accepted the county's offer and that ordinance now is effective as of, uh, actually early last, or late last week. And so we can now complete the transfer. Once this is recorded in the commissioner's journal and the deed records, then the transfer will be affected and Mr. Kenyon will get a check to the city.
Um, Roy Kenyon, anything you would like to add?
Uh, no, I, I think that, uh, the party thing is a good idea. Um, it's been, it's been a long drawn out process. Um, I do have some questions and I will talk to Wayne a little later about process of pavement, um, but we don't have to discuss that now. So yeah, I'm, I'm ready to, uh, move forward with this and, um, officially hand the keys over to the City of Lincoln City.
Hey, thank you. Um, Commissioner Hall, questions or comments?
It's been a long time coming. Just thrilled that it's finally here.
Commissioner Hunt, anything?
I think, uh, we've belabored this subject many times.
All right. Well, uh, in that, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the order transferring jurisdiction of a portion of Logan Road, County Road 100 to the City of Lincoln City with joy, gratitude, relief and thanks.
Yeah, and with a hearty finally. I'll second it.
Yeah, that too.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Yay. Motion passes. Fantastic. All right. Thank you. Um, moving on, under discussion and information, uh, implementation of reopening plan for lodging properties presented by County Council Wayne Belmont. Wayne, take it away.
Thank you, Commissioners. Of course, last, uh, Thursday night, after a pretty lengthy meeting, you adopted Order Number 52136, which is our reopening plan for lodging, uh, in Lincoln County in the unincorporated areas. We were joined by the cities of Lincoln City, uh, and Yawhats and then later Salats. And I think Toledo's considering that sometime, um, this week, uh, to also join us, um, to reopen beginning June 1st with some restrictions and guidelines for the, the process of reopening. Uh, towards that end, one of the things we wanted to do was make sure we can get the information out to the lodging properties. And we're talking about hotels, motels, short-term rentals slash VRDs, uh, and some other kinds of short-term, um, properties as well as our, our. and some other kinds of short-term properties, as well as our RV parks and campgrounds in the county. And those were all addressed in the order. What we've been doing since that time is putting together, Casey Miller has actually constructed a portal on the county website. There's some links directly to it for the reopening of the lodging properties that will include an application that can be filled out and a plan submitted by the lodging properties, certifying that they're going to comply with these particular requirements and get going as soon as June 1st. We're in the process of completing that application. And again, it will be online. What I was very pleased to discover as we were putting this together is that we actually have electronic email communication capability with all of our STR VRD properties and the bulk of our other properties. I think there's two or three campgrounds that we currently don't have an email address for, but we're going to get the materials out to them. So we're actually able to do this, the entire process here remotely. So this will be a fillable form that will be available on the website and I think it'll move through fairly quickly. We've pulled together the necessary information we want to have displayed or provided by the lodging properties to the visitors to our county to, while they're coming to the county, to make sure that they, you know, try to abide by the concerns that we have locally as citizens about what it means to come to the county at this time. So we hope to stand that all up and complete that. The website is actually operational now and there's information on the website, but we hope to have the final connections, the portal done by tomorrow. And they're on told that we'll have everything pulled together and ready to go tomorrow. We've been getting some questions on issues and we'll try and provide some additional information to clarify anything that comes up in terms of questions about what this process is like. So I think it's coming together. I know that several of the cities are either putting together their own process to do this or are waiting to look at ours so they can stand them up. I think it's a little easier for those that are beginning the process on June 1st and those who are moving quicker than that. I do know that the website does contain a directory, because one of the first questions that kept coming in was, well, what date are you opening? And then, of course, it depends on where the property is located as to what the date is. So we did put up on the site a nice chart right now that explains the opening dates for each of the jurisdictions in the county and including the Sletz Tribe. So unless there's any other questions on that, I think that's my presentation.
Commissioner Hall, questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Hunt, questions?
No questions.
I would just add that I think the chart has been really helpful to people. So thank you for the communications team for putting that together. Obviously, there's still some city meetings happening. I think the city of Newport meets tonight. I think Deepak Gray meets tomorrow. And so, you know, it's foreseeable that some of those dates change. Let's just make sure we keep up on that. So we have the most current information we're giving out to people. I would also say what would be helpful is as those orders are adopted in their final version by each of those cities, it'd be nice to have a copy of all those orders so that as people reach out to us, we are able to provide them that final order so that they can see exactly what's in the city, that their vacation rental or hotel actually resides. I know we've been working on collecting those links, so thank you.
We will, and we'll actually make a link to any other city sites. If they stand up a standalone website or wherever their links are and their own information, we'll make sure to include those on our website.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Other reopening plans and updates, Wayne? Anything from you?
I just wanted to talk about a couple of things, if I can, fairly briefly. One is that the reason that Rachel Maddox is not here with us actually is that she's working on putting together an application. And we're really excited about this. This is really the county standing up a single portal for some emergency business assistance in the form of grants with funding that the Oregon Legislature provided very recently. And this is the first spill out of those funds. And it's a great application. We're looking at really making available $400,000 for the county, for citizens in the county businesses, qualifying businesses. There's a number of criteria that have to be met. But really, it's that kind of gap funding for those businesses that were unable to access some of the other federal and state programs out there. That's what the state intends for this to do. It requires a local match. And the great thing about this is that we actually are partnering with Lincoln City, Yawhats and Newport, because they all have programs currently underway to do funding or are going to be laid out pretty quickly here. And some of those funds are being used as the match for money that we're going to be providing for this program. We're going to come down and talk in just a minute about the Small Business Emergency Loan Fund, and that's really what the application was for here. And we're looking at partnering with a new group. It's Community Lending Works, an affiliation with Devon Northwest, who we've had some dealings with on the housing side of things. And it's really pretty exciting to see this program with a single portal coming in where people can come in, see what they qualify for and then be sent to the area that they can get funding for. And so we're really excited about this. This is, again, part of the Build Back Better concept that the board has adopted here as we go forward. So we're thinking that this will be a great assistance to businesses in the county and hope to go forward with that. The other thing is that we finally, after a great deal of time and effort, are getting some indication of what funding will be available under the CARES Act for local governments. And we just got some guidance today, this afternoon. We're getting out there and we're exploring what we can do to actually see what qualifying local governments, which would include cities, counties, special districts, what we might be able to do to get some funding for ourselves for the great deal of expense, time and personnel and outright dollars we've spent on response to the COVID crisis. So stay tuned for that. We have really short turnaround time to make an application for these funds. But this is only the first round of that particular funding too. So we'll keep you posted on that.
Thank you. Is there other reopening plans or updates by other staff? Anything from the sheriff's office?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Curtis Landers, Lincoln County Sheriff. I can just add with the approval of the Phase 1 reopening plan that we started more proactive enforcement, mainly traffic enforcement, where added safety education and enforcement to really start addressing those deadly five, the speed violations, drinking, driving, distracted driving, those type of things that we haven't been doing. So we are moving into that portion of the recovery. We do have a draft plan that's becoming close to finalizing as far as, I keep wanting to say reopening the jail, but basically the jail's been open. It's just adding more capacity back to the jail, allowing officers to arrest on more crimes than we've initially done. I've kind of delayed it for a couple of reasons, just to let you know. Number one, there's still, we're still the fear that we do not want to get, you know, contract somebody with the virus into the jail. I think that would be detrimental to what we're trying to do, even though we're prepared for it. We're watching right now at the state penitentiary as they've had a large outbreak there and just kind of, you know, it's causing a lot of challenges for them that they're facing. So we want to try to keep that from happening as much as possible. But we also understand as things start coming back together in recovery that we're going to have to be flexible in that and start looking at our plan to enact it. Another reason is the Impax Grant, which is the improving people's access to, I'm going to mess up this one up. Anyhow, it's the Behavior Health Grant, Senate Bill 973. Commissioner Hall has actually been the, is the selected commissioner that's been on that committee, on the Grants Review Committee. I was actually the sheriff on the committee. It's really had a complete change of direction. Please jump in here, Commissioner Hall, if you want. It's initially, I think, that Lincoln County is going to have a hard time preparing an application for it. But now with what's going on and with all the jails having a lower population, part of what they're wanting to do with that funding, and it's 10 million that the legislators approved, now it is subject to the cuts that the state is going through as far as the eight and a half percent cuts that exercise that they go. But it's still, that would, you know, still allow nine-plus million dollars going out to the counties. They wanted to get the money out as quickly as possible to start seeing results and they really want to identify the population that's currently out of custody that would normally be in if it wasn't for the COVID restrictions that jails have placed on there and really try to develop a plan to keep them out, but keep them from committing crime and the things that we've been really striving to do in the past. So the application's open. It closes June 12th. There's actually another meeting. I'm going to jump off here as soon as I get done and jump into that meeting as far as strategizing what we want to try to prepare for. We're initially looking at some type of diversionary process to go through and we'll keep you posted as this goes through. It has to be officially approved by the Lipstick Committee. On behalf of the county, each county gets one application and each tribe gets one application. And I know that the tribe is also on that conference call going on right now to see if we can coordinate some type of partnership to see what we do. So that's another reason to kind of hold off a little bit right now. If we do move forward with the plan, I'll let you know now that we probably will do a temporary cap of 120 inmates instead of the normal 161. And the basis for that is, is that still allows us to single cell all the inmates. 161 is when we're double, tripling and quad some of our cells that are a little bit larger. This will still allow us to keep a max of 120, 20 inmates and allow us to single cell those. So there are a lot of plans going in works as far as law enforcement, public safety, moving forward. I just wanted to brief you on a few. And if you have any questions or Commissioner Hall wanted to say anymore in Impax Grant, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I think the sheriff really covered it very well. Thanks.
Commissioner Hunt, anything?
No, I, again, appreciate the information and keep up the good work.
Okay, moving on, Small Business Emergency Loan Fund. Wayne, I think you sort of tiptoed into this, but is there anything else you wanted to add?
I do have, say that actually in order to qualify for the emergency business funding from the state to pass the money that's coming through, we do need to have an arrangement. They're actually, they like to have the arrangement, what they call a CDFI. And I apologize, I'm sitting here in the conference room and I think I don't have my access to my computer right now. So a CDFI is a certified development financial institution, I think. But anyway, these are community lending programs. There's not very many of these across the state, but that's who the business Oregon prefers to deal with. And Community Lending Works is one such agency. They serve, currently serve Kooz, Douglas, Lane, Lynn, Benton, Lincoln, Marion, Clackamas and Olomone County with services. And they have a great reputation for their process of getting money out in the community, especially to small businesses. So Jerry has, actually Jerry Herbage has reviewed the contract and I think we're ready to go. And we'll need to enter into an arrangement with them prior to May 30th so we can stand up this program if we get the funding from the state.
Okay, any questions for Wayne on that? Commissioner Hall, questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Hunt?
It's just important to note another way that we're trying to help out those that are suffering in the current environment.
All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting. Our kind of next meeting we have coming up are Wednesday, May 20th, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. We have our Lincoln County Budget Committee meeting. Again, that'll be online. And then Tuesday, May 26th, that's right, because we have a holiday coming up at 3 o'clock. Whatever, Board of Commissioners meeting. And if you are listening and want to submit input to either one of those meetings, the email address is boc@co.lincoln.or.us. All right, thank you, everybody.
Bye-bye.